We can call the meeting to here we go. Okay. And also, before we start, I should say that this meeting is actually two meetings. We have a business meeting to vote on two items, one of which is the appointment of our new superintendent. And then after the business meeting, which will be very brief, we will adjourn that meeting, but stay in this Zoom call and then have our workshop meeting right after that, because usually we don't vote on things in workshop meetings. So with that, I will call the meeting to order at 7:08 PM. I'm very sorry for the delay and we can start with the pledge of allegiance. So we can all rise. Maybe I don't know. I pledge allegiance. Okay, thank you all. And I would also like to, before we begin with the business of the meeting, have a brief moment of silence to honor and respect the memories of everyone that we've lost in our community and in our surrounding communities to COVID-19. Yeah, I don't think that there is much else to say besides all of their memories are a blessing to us and our hearts are with their families and with their loved ones and our community very strongly feels their loss. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is public comment. And Ralph, you have a way to know who is here for public comment?
Yes, I actually had the attendees online. And I would ask that the attendees raise your hand if you would like to make a public comment, but if not, we have about, we have about 10 attendees. Would you want me to just go down the line and actually just unmute them to see if they need to make a public comment with their name?
That's great. And let's all of the rest of us mute ourselves right now.
The first is Scott Hurwitz.
Ralph, I was not intending to comment on this portion of the meeting, but the second portion.
Thank you. The next is Danny Brown.
Same Ralph, second half of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. The next is David Hubbleman.
Hi Ralph, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I will say hello to Dr. Estrada.
Great, thank you. The next is Diane Lurichal.
Hi, I was planning to speak at the second, at the end of the second half, but welcome to Dr. Estrada. Very impressed by your resume. And good, good job Board of Ed.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll make sure to note that. The next is Evan Byron.
Hello, everyone. I was not planning to comment either, but also want to send a welcome to our new superintendent. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. The next is Jean Pholbiak. Okay. Sorry, Jean, your version is very annoying me to open it up. Jeff Wagerman. Jeff. Jennifer McAllister.
I'm not going to comment, but welcome for our new superintendent.
Thank you. Joseph Jendurko.
Second half of the meeting, Ralph. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. I'm assuming that's probably going to be the same for Mary, but I will. Mary Jordan.
I suppose I need to wait for the other meeting, but I do want to extend a welcome to Dr. Estrada on behalf of the Norwalk Federation of Teachers. Thank you very much.
And just, just two more guys. I apologize for the, actually three more. Shirley Mosby.
Not at this time. Welcome, Dr. Estrada.
Okay. Tori Sullivan.
I thought I was watching from afar.
It's okay. No problem. Thank you. And the last is William S. Pierce.
Please, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sir, I think that's it for public comments.
Wonderful. And I can't, I don't, I didn't have a way to see who was here beforehand, but welcome friends to all of you that are here with us. So with that, we can move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the appointment of Dr. Estrada. And so may I have a motion to appoint Dr. Alexandra Estrada as Superintendent of Schools effective July 1st? I have a whole bunch of motions. I pick Heidi. And who would like to second? Barbara. Barbara, second. All in favor?
I.
We have I, 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 five. I can't see the rest of the people. Okay, Sherelle, can you do a voice?
I can. Are we going to be allowed to speak or should I just say what I have to say now?
I, I think if you want to comment, probably vote and then comment? Or I don't know, should we?
We need, we skipped over discussion, so I think she should.
I didn't ask if there was any discussion. Okay. Is there any discussion?
It was just very, very, very brief. Alex, welcome. And what I'm going to say basically is 80% of me is voting with my colleagues. I was not totally satisfied with the company or the process. So I will leave that to a, to a private discussion. And, and basically, my biggest concern is the divide that I've seen and that I'm hoping that this is not going to be further divide or politics as usual. So my vote will be yes, and hoping that my 20% apprehension will be proven wrong.
Okay, so now that we've had discussion, is there any further discussion? Thank you, Sherelle. Okay, now, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, is that unanimous? Who, I feel like there's somebody I can't see. I can't see Godfrey.
There's no question.
Wonderful. Okay, so that's unanimous. Welcome, Dr. Estrada. We are so happy to have you here. I am so happy to have you here. I think that your leadership is going to be invaluable to us at this time and I really couldn't be happier. And every time anyone asks me for a quote, that's what I say. I couldn't be happier. So now the, if there is, actually, would you like to give a statement now? Before we move on to the next item?
If that's okay with you.
That's great. Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
So I just want to start off by saying that I am extremely excited to be here this evening with you, although I wish I was in person. I appreciate the fact that we're practicing social distancing to ensure the safety and well-being of all. Especially, like you said before, we've experienced loss and that's a challenge for all of us. But I know that as a community, we'll come together and get through this. I would like to also start off by letting, letting everybody know a little bit about myself. I'm a mother, a wife, an educator that firmly believes in the value of education and the development of the whole child. Someone who is a testament to what education can do for a child. A testament that the power of a school community can change the life of a child. You see, my parents were immigrants that came from the Dominican Republic in search of a better life. And in that process, they weren't, weren't able to get edu-, highly educated, but they knew that they could do that for their children. And they instilled very early on in me the love and passion for education. And it took a village of teachers and educators to support me through that path to ensure that I am where I am today. As somebody coming into the system not knowing English and having amazing teachers like Mr. Lovisi, who nobody knows who he is, but he's dear in my heart, my fifth grade teacher who transformed my life. Tonight, I am here with you remotely, like I said before, practicing social distancing, wanting to be with you in person, because I believe in what you say when you say that you care about children. I believe that there is nothing more important than our children's education and nothing that will propel our community more than investing in education. I also believe in your mission. I believe in your vision. I believe in your values. I believe that you want, like myself, to further the success of our children. Like you, I believe in providing all children an outstanding education that will prepare them for the future that has yet to be imagined. What we're going through is a perfect example of that. The evidence of that belief is in the results you already have accomplished through your strategic plan, as well as these past few weeks, getting everybody engaged in distance learning in a way that was seamless, based on the feedback that I already heard from several people in the community and just reading about the great work that your team has put forward. And I know that Dr. Adonowski has done a phenomenal job to support the district to the level that it's accomplished thus far. And I am committed to ensuring and making sure that that work continues to expand and, and further develop. I want to thank the board, Chairwoman Sarah Lamou and members of the board at, at large for supporting me, believing in me, for trusting in my ability to lead us to even greater things for the children of Norwalk. I'm looking forward to engaging with members of the community and the district at large. I'm here to learn from your hopes and aspirations and to take what's already there and build upon it. I want to thank you very much for your confidence in me. I look forward to meeting many of you in the days to come, even if it's virtually and throughout the academic year. So again, I just want to extend my, my gratitude in you allowing me to join your community. I want you to know that I'm committed in, in equity. I'm committed in ensuring that all students have what they need. And I firmly believe in the power of schools to change the lives of children. And schools are the only, one of the biggest components of a child's life that can ensure that their dreams can be accomplished. I look forward again to partnering in the work with everyone at Norwalk to ensure that every child acquires the education that they're entitled to. Thank you so much for the warm welcome for those of you who are with us tonight. And thank you for the board for putting their faith in me and hope and helping you move this, the district even further from the place that Dr. Adonowski is leaving it, which is one of a great honor because Norwalk is one of the best city school districts in Connecticut, thanks to a lot of the work that he has done thus far. Again, thank you.
See you. I think if we all wanted to unmute ourselves and do a little applause, that that would be appropriate. So moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of the MOU with the Norwalk Federation of Teachers for Distance Learning. Before I ask for a motion, I wanted to extend my absolute heartfelt thanks to all of the teachers and administrators and staff who have been working incredibly hard to provide really robust, high-quality distance learning experiences for our kids in Norwalk. I can say my own children are having an oddly delightful experience with their distance learning. They're really, really loving getting to see their teachers and see their classmates when they do Zoom meetings. They are digging into the work that is coming home in packets, my younger ones. My older daughter was just telling me in the kitchen that she's been able to improve a grade that she was having a little bit of trouble with because she's had the time to focus and she's had the support of her teachers. I know Scott Hurwitz from Bryan McMahon was listening and I wanted to just specifically say that the guidance staff and Dr. Allen, the Assistant Principal at McMahon, reached out to my daughter right away when they thought she might be struggling through this time, which she was a little bit, because it's been a difficult time. So very, very heartfelt thanks. I know how difficult it is because I'm also doing distance teaching myself in another district, not in Norwalk, and it is it takes a lot of energy to do, particularly with the amount of success that we have seen here in Norwalk in a very short time, developing an extremely valuable, meaningful interaction with students' minds. And I, and I thank you all from the bottom of my heart. So with that said, I would like a motion to approve this MOU. Anybody? Erica and seconded by Diana. Is there any discussion? I can't see anybody. If there is, Ralph, you'll have to tell me.
I just want to say, Sarah, just to, I just want to echo your, your comments and and add the thanks to people like you, Sarah, all the parents who are, you know, putting on very brave face in the face of very uncertain circumstances. I know it's not easy and I, I tell my own students that I acknowledge, you know, everybody's effort in making it work.
Any further discussion?
I just want to quickly add and echo on what Colin had mentioned as well, but I have a high schooler and I see the interaction that teachers have and it's just the engagement that they really work with, with all of our students and that one-on-one contact and that group meeting that they have and the discussions, the lively discussions. So I think we're making do with what we have and I think teachers have gone really above and beyond, as well as parents and students. Parents are right there at best that they can helping students as well. So I think it takes a village and I think that's actually how it's been happening. So we appreciate everybody's hard work.
Absolutely. Okay. Any further discussion? I'm going to swipe right to see. Okay, all in favor? Looks to be unanimous. Sherelle, if you could vote with your voice.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yeah.
All good.
Okay. So that is unanimous also. And that is the last item on our special business meeting agenda. And so I would ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting, but we're not actually going to shut the call. May I have a motion to adjourn? Erica and second, Mike, all in favor? It's unanimous. So the first special meeting is adjourned at whatever time it happens to be. It's 7:26 and we can move on to the second meeting, which is the workshop on the budget. So I will call that meeting to order at 7:27. And I'm going to just pull up that agenda on here. Anybody has it open and can tell me what the first item on that agenda is? That would be pretty helpful. The COVID update is the first and that's Dr. Adonowski?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, so let's, let's move to that while I pull it open and I'll.
So, um, so board members, we have a meeting on Tuesday. I have a rather lengthy update. I think I would it'd be appropriate for me to defer it till that time. I did want to defer to Mayor Rilling, however, who's also attended this meeting in the event that he has something to say about the COVID situation in the city.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You know, we're in some very interesting times in this crisis because there's talk about reopening and starting to ease some of the restrictions. I fear that we're starting to get a little complacent because every day in Norwalk, we get 30 or more cases. Today, we sadly had to announce five more deaths. Right now, almost 1% of our entire city has contracted this virus. So we're far from out of the woods. We really need to be cautious. The social distancing, the physical distancing is the only thing that's proven to work. We've had some very strict restrictions on some of the businesses in town. I've shut down nail, nail spas, barber shops, hair salons, tattoo parlors, massage parlors. We've restricted the number of people that can go into some of the larger stores. We've worked with them. Another conversation with the Chief Executive Officers of ShopRite, Stop &amp; Shop, Costco, Stu Leonard's, Walmart tomorrow to kind of go over some of the other things they can do to stop this spread and to increase the social distancing and to limit some of the things that are happening in their stores. Right now, Norwalk Hospital seems to be in fairly good shape. They've repurposed a lot of their rooms to accommodate some of the increased numbers. We have an off-site or an outside collection center right by the hospital, collecting some of the samples to test for the COVID virus. But you know, and the police and fire are doing well and we want to say thank you, police, fire, EMS, the grocery store workers, the restaurant workers who are continuing to feed us. And we all know the situation. If you read my briefing every single night, you'll see what's going on in the city. You'll see what's going on around the state. Right now, I think we've announced tonight that Norwalk has the number somewhere around 830 to 840 cases. There's some discrepancies in the numbers between last night and tonight because the state comes out at different times than we do. We have more, believe it or not, we had sometimes have more updated information because we can log into a site and get the latest number. The state stops their numbers at 11:30 in the morning and then that's the number they project. But I guess the message that I have is that we are far from out of the woods. We need to make sure that we get it right. We have been working on social distancing restrictions, closed businesses now for the better part of four and a half weeks. The sad thing would be to take some false sense of security that this is over and then kind of backslide and have another wave because there is the possibility of another wave in the fall. There's a possibility of another wave in the spring of 2021. And the available vaccine probably won't be available in great numbers for another 18 months. So all due caution is the word of the day. And thank you for deferring and thank you for allowing me to give the update.
And Mr. Mayor.
To Dr. Estrada. Thank you. Glad to have you aboard.
Mr. Mayor, I also wanted to say thank you for your leadership during this time. It's a very, very difficult time for anyone to be in leadership, but I think if you look around the country at other municipalities and other states where the focus is not necessarily on people's safety and well-being, I personally am extremely happy to be here in Norwalk where our leadership is focused on keeping people safe and keeping people healthy. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Of course. And then Dr. Adonowski, if you don't have anything further about that, then we should move forward into the work session?
Right. I'm going to give a fairly lengthy COVID update on Tuesday night, so I would, I would encourage you to just work, go right into the work session.
Let's do it. So who's starting? Sorry. I assume.
So I think ma'am chair, if I, if I may, just for context, at your last meeting, I presented the board with a set of recommendations. I understand that the Finance Committee has met since then. You've also had, had a caucus meeting on this. You know, it might be good for Ms. Mayor Mitchell to just kind of review the, the committee, the, the, the work of the committee so far and you know, if there are some outstanding issues, you know, we've, we may be able to provide further information on them.
Okay, so I shall turn it over to the Chair of our Finance Committee.
Hey, Dr. Adonowski, didn't give me a heads up. I thought this was your show.
Well, I thought, I thought you were going to do that, so I'm sorry.
It's all good. So the Finance Committee met last week and we reviewed once again, the superintendent's recommendations and discussed some of the areas where the board is interested in looking at alternative cuts. In particular, the committee discussed maintaining the guidance counselors at the middle school, but pausing on the counseling director for a year, which would be a sad loss for many of the things that we're trying to achieve, but would enable us to save some other things. We we also wanted the negotiations and personnel committee to work with our union to discuss alternatives to the high school department head cut. Some compromise there or collaboration to find savings without sacrificing the functionality. So I think that in collaboration with personnel and negotiations, we are looking for a way through to, to realize savings, but also maintain as much of the functionality in our high school buildings that we can. We have had a great deal of response from the public, from teachers and parents who have felt that that would be a painful cut. We have even in the cuts that Dr. Adonowski has introduced, it doesn't get us to the full eight million that we need to get to. So we have more work to do. And one of the things the committee really was digging into, but does not have answers on yet, is what, to what extent are we going to realize savings because of the closure that we could maybe roll over to cover some of these costs next year? And to what extent have we taken on expenses that we didn't anticipate that may or may not be reimbursed by the CARES Act money from the federal level? So we know that we're anticipating in the neighborhood of $2 million, but we don't have the guidelines yet for how we can apply that. Whether we'll get a 75% reimbursement or 100% reimbursement, we simply don't know yet. So we anticipate receiving a report at our May Finance Committee meeting with better numbers to represent where we really will be by the end of the year. It's my hope that the mayor, the council and the board of Estes Tax Station will allow us to roll over as much as possible so that we can continue to employ our, our wonderful members of the community that will need those jobs in the economy that we're heading into. So I think, I think that's a thumbnail sketch of where we are. If anybody has any questions, happy to field them.
Ma'am Chair, could I, can I just say a word about the, that counselor supervisor position?
Yes.
So I just wanted to clarify. In my recommendations, we had moved that to the Priority School District Grant. So the Priority School District Grant, like Title I, is fairly broad in what it can be used for. However, it has a supplant rule. So you cannot move, this has to be for new things that would benefit the, 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 the. So you cannot move, this has to be for new things that would benefit the 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 school system, particularly a high-need urban school system. But you cannot move a local expenditure onto it. So, you know, if the decision is not to have the or provide the clinical supervision to the counselors, we can take that out. That would enable something else new to go into that that slot. But we cannot move counselors that are existing into that funding line. Now, we will have two vacancies among middle school counselors. So if we are going to maintain the the three at each school for a total of twelve, then we will need to get out soon in terms of recruiting to hire hire those those new people. So I just want to clarify that one does not take the place or of the other or enable you to to keep another person on because that's an existing expenditure and the the PSD would have to be be something new. We it it does enable us, however, if you take the counseling supervisor out, you know, it does enable us to do something else that may not have made it into the PSD grant in the first place because we we had to prioritize so tightly.
I understand.
Thank you for that, Dr. Adamowski. I think there are other smaller savings that we didn't, I didn't want to go over in the middle of a quick overview that would not would be replaceable, like the interns and things like that. We can find some savings here and there to help us with that position, those positions.
I would like to say sort of for the benefit of anybody who might be watching from the public, just to sort of reiterate that we're in a very unusual circumstance this year with the budget, that there are a lot of unknowns in terms of what our actual expenses will be, as Ms. Meyer Mitchell said, what any savings we might have be relative to this crisis. And that we are not even able to make many of these decisions. And so I know, particularly at a time of great public anxiety, we have been hearing from a lot of people who have anxiety about particular programs and particular cuts and particular proposals. And I just wanted to let everyone in the community know that all of this is very much influx until we have the information that we need to be able to make the decisions. So I felt like that was sort of worth a mention. So I'm not sure in this workshop session what it's appropriate to talk about and not talk about. Because partially for that reason, partially because there is so much uncertainty, and also partially because this is a little bit unusual in my experience of our workshop meetings. Usually, we listen for a bit and then make comments for a bit. So.
Sarah?
Yes.
If I just can ask a question, kind of related to what you were talking about. Dr. Adamowski, I know that you and your team and the entire Norwalk Public Schools have been working pretty much around the clock to keep some semblance of continuity going. But, you know, one of the questions that I think we're trying to grapple with is a sense of timing and when we might feel like we have enough insight into some of these open questions, particularly regarding federal reimbursements, and particularly regarding the up and down effects of, you know, distance learning spending.
Sure, so I can address a little bit of that with you tonight. And I think, you know, I think we we can put these into three buckets. First of all, there were expenses that we have had that the city has has paid for. That was primarily two fairly large expenses of sanitizing the school buildings for the reopening of school whenever that occurs. That was some six hundred thousand dollars, and then another four hundred thousand dollars to provide laptops to the fourth graders. We understand through the Finance Director that either all are part of that, perhaps seventy-five percent of that will be reimbursed by FEMA. So that's, that is kind of a separate expenditure string. Then we have the issue that Ms. Meyer Mitchell mentioned. We have new expenses. One of the greatest ones has been this incredible process that we've been going through each week, each week of copying thousands and thousands of sheets of paper and mailing out, you know, four thousand packets of of materials in the mail every week. You know, that's a, that's an unusual expense that had not been budgeted, which is very significant. At the same time, we're going to have some operational savings. Some of those will manifest in terms of of utilities. We will not have any staff savings because we have kept all our staff on on board. But there will be some things that we're just not going to do. That's what Mr. Hamilton is investigating now. He's got two sides of a ledger on this. We also have are making a concerted effort not to spend what we don't have to spend, even though it may be budgeted, in the hope that it will be helpful to the board to have, you know, an amount of money where you can say to the to the mayor and the and the council, the BET, that you would you would like to transfer this to them and 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 use that to offset, you know, X amount of money of cuts that you would you would have to make. So that's the second thing. The third bucket involves.
Dr. Adamowski, can you, would you mind just restating that a little more simply for me? I'm not feeling like the most at my sharpest. Just the very last part of what you said.
Well, let's, let's just hypothetically say we were able to identify a million dollars of savings as a result of the shutdown.
Right.
Or a million dollars of things that we would, on a intentional basis, would not purchase this year because we have less of a need for it this this year. You know, under normal circumstances, the schools would stock up on things or, you know, replenish things. But let's, let's say that intentionally, after the additional expenses were netted out, we could generate a million dollars. That, we hope, would be helpful to the board in terms of 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 dealing with the with the cuts where you could say to the to the city, you know, we'd like this to carry over to you, and we'd like to have you credit us this amount against the the amount of next year's budget. So that's, that's kind of the second bucket or the second effort that is is going on.
Okay, thank you.
And and then there is this, the third. You, you, I'm sure you're, you're all aware, members of the public are aware, that our our Senate and House have have passed what is known as the CARES Act, multi-billion-dollar effort to keep the economy afloat. There is an aspect of it called the Education Restoration Act. So within the CARES Act resides the Education Restoration Act. That is based upon Title I funding. And so it is really, it is devoted to providing assistance to districts to close the gaps that have expanded among the needy students relative to the shutdown. So, you know, we have, we have very little information to go on in terms of the effect of the COVID nineteen school shutdown. And that's because, obviously, this hasn't happened before.
Right.
The closest we can get to it are the studies that were done of the children in New Orleans after Katrina. Now, in that case, those students lost an entire semester of schooling. In our case, it's a, it was a quarter and a half, so, you know, something short of a of a semester. And, you know, when they they returned, they returned essentially to charter schools that were set up in temporary places and and so on. The 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 studies there suggest that it took a two, a full two years for students to make up what they lost during that that period of time. And now, again, they were not doing distance learning, so we we expect, you know, our loss to be less than that. But two years, and then there, that was sixty percent of the students. There was another forty percent that never made it up, that never, never could could catch up. So the Restoration Act is money that we will get for things like a expanded or more robust summer school, tiered interventions when school comes back in to session, extending the the school day, extending the school year. This is designed around making up and providing more instruction for those students who need it the most. This crisis has really, as, you know, exacerbated, exacerbated all of the inequities in Connecticut. You just, you see it among the school systems that had technology versus those that did not, those that had curriculum capacity, those that did not. You know, we were three weeks ahead of many school systems in our capacity to even offer distance learning. And, you know, if there's any issue that we have to deal with in the future, it's it's K through three, because what we are doing with mailing these packets is just not sustainable. We have to get to the point where all of our K-three students have tablets and we're able to direct distance learning through the use of the of the tablets, similar to what our suburban neighbors are are doing. But in any event, the 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 third bucket is this Restoration Act. That's what we are currently studying. We'll have more information on that in the in the future. And at some point, you know, we will need to bring a proposal to you in terms of how that is, how that would be used. We're in phase three now. We have these two-week phases of distance learning. We're in phase three. If we went all the way to the end of the year, we would be through phase six. And the Restoration Act services would would hit in after that, the in the next phase, which is essentially the summer and the the return to school. So that, that's what I think the big, the big picture is.
Dr. Adamowski?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I am curious. So the analysis that I saw recently shows the possibility of rolling waves of this through the year, that we may end up needing to come in and out of distance learning even in the fall. When I think of the expense of the packets, would we end up saving money if we just went ahead and bought the tablets now, using the CAREX money to save us that printing cost in the future and to allow for a better connection with the teacher and the student?
Yes, I, I, I think you're, I think we're right on the same, same thinking on that. One of the things we're looking at is whether or not we could use the Restoration Act funds to obtain the 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 tablets. Also, undetermined yet at this point, is the city's that allocation in the capital budget of what we would have for technology. You'll recall that the Budget Director's recommendation was for zero. Mayor has indicated in subsequent meetings that there may be flexibility with that. We could, we would get some type of a of an appropriation. So that's, that's another factor. But yeah, I think it it would be the, it is, is definitely going to be our our recommendation to to get the tablets. We have to be prepared, as you, as you said, for another shutdown, either in the winter or in the spring. And we have to be prepared that something else might be able to happen. And again, you know, if you look at our our suburban neighbors, this is, you know, they 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 all have these tablets, K-three. They use a, they use a program called CSOW that is the the platform for for younger children, and we have to get to that point. I think we've been so strong in this in in most areas, but this is an area where we need to increase our capacity.
Can you share with the Finance Committee as you work out the costs, just so that we're aware?
We will.
Great, thank you.
Heidi?
I think I'm on the same page with Barbara and Dr. Adamowski. I think also the costs that are involved with the packets and the manpower and putting it together and and distributing it and distributing it out. But also, I'm thinking, and I know how important it is for our very young learners, our primary learners, our K through second and third included, could we possibly, I'm not sure cost-wise, if we did that kind of in a different way, which may be starting with third and then second and then first and then kindergarten? If it's a cost, which I know it's a huge, you know, as far as cost is concerned, but I think our youngest students would gain so much by having that interaction as well, having a Chromebook in hand. I know it is going to require more parent participation and help in that, especially in the beginning stages, but I think the engagement piece for our youngest learners is really quite critical.
Sure, so, so these are our tablets. There is a question as to whether or not you should do this for kindergarten or not. So yes, and it, and it, absolutely, depending upon the funds we have available, this could be phased.
Do you have a third, second, first, and then if we have funds and we can do kindergarten? I think even our youngest learners at five and six could really benefit from having this, but at least through through first grade.
Yes.
So in terms of using the time that we've allocated for this meeting, what is our objective with this time right now?
Well, I think, I think there were, there were two objectives. One was to give the board a chance to publicly discuss any of the recommendations that I I've made. But the second was to provide some opportunity for the public to comment, those people who wanted to comment on on various items.
Okay, so that being the case, do any other board members have any other points of discussion about proposed cuts or proposed savings or any other things relative to the very influx budget discussions that we're having right now that have not been addressed or that they would like to speak to?
I.
Go ahead, yeah.
You did it right, Sarah. Diana?
No, I just wanted the public to know that because this is such a difficult situation, there are so many things going on, so many changes that we have, we have been sitting, talking about every little detail, every little subject, every little thing that we can think of. So I know that the public is out there thinking that we are cutting this and we are cutting that, and we're not talking about this, and we're not talking about that. But we are reading all the emails that are coming in. We are all discussing every single topic that comes in. So please, just if you have a concern, keep emailing. We will keep talking. And right now, we can't give you any specifics because there's so much unknown, and we don't have all of our facts here.
Thanks. Thank you, Diana. That's a very good point. Erica, I feel like I heard you say.
Yes, I do want to be transparent to Dr. Adamowski and let you know that I have asked the board to reconsider and recognize the work that was done by our spring coach prior to the kickoff of the season and consider a prorated stipend. Many children, myself included, when I was in high school, had have a relationship with their coaches and athletics that was important in their outcome as a relationship with their teachers and their curriculum. So with that in mind, I have asked the board to re.
Thank you, Erica. Michael?
I want to follow up a little bit with what Diana said. You know, the the two things we've gotten probably the most emails on, or two of the things we've gotten a lot of emails on, is one, the department chairs at the high school level. And the second thing would be, you know, with all the turmoil going on, the the concept of should we proceed with the school start time change this coming September? And what I want to say on on each of those. And what I want to say on on each of those subjects, you know, and I know this is all work in progress, but I know, having been a high school teacher, I under appreciate the importance of department chairs. I've talked to a lot of teachers and I know the way our s- we're, the way we're structured is different from, you know, most school districts in in our our neighbors and other districts in Connecticut. And so that ideally, we can modify the structure to be more in line with our peers um and therefore keep them while also coming up with some incremental funding. So I'm I'm hoping we can come up with uh something that is acceptable to all parties as well as generates some some of the revenue that we're going to need uh for the twenty twenty-one budget. Um, secondly, on the school start times, um, you know, it is a, it is a, there is a cost associated with making that change, and I think already the board has been committed. We had a committee that worked on this, uh, they've been, we've been working on this for three years now. So obviously, uh, a lot of people would not want, you know, to postpone yet again. We we, there was some talk of implementing it even last year, so this would be the second postponement. I also know we signed a new contract with a new bus company, which has that schedule embedded in it. So it would be somewhat complicated, but if I recall correctly, um, as a board member, another board member suggested to me, when we were questioning the new board company, they did say changes could be made. Um, so I think we'll want to look at that, look at those minutes and and see what what possibilities there might be, because um that could, that could generate some revenue as well, because we know we're we're struggling to find that revenue and we've got to think a little bit outside of the box and we've got to prioritize. I think the most important thing is we have to prioritize, we know we can't do it all, and we got to figure out what's most important. So um, obviously, we know this is all work in progress, but I thought people should be aware of some of the topics we've been considering. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Adamowski, I actually have a question about that, so can you clarify that?
Yes.
Yeah, just go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you for the opportunity to do that. I've had this conversation with two or three board members individually. And so um uh it would be good to to have this publicly with the whole board. Um, I don't think you are in the, in a position to um uh make any change in the start time for for next year. And the uh reason is you, we went out to bid uh in enough time. Um, and um, this, you know, was, this was worked on during the fall, early winter. Uh, in February, you approved a contract with the new uh vendor and saved money as as a result of um of that bidding process. First of all, most bus companies need forty-six months um of lead time after they get a contract in order to uh obtain buses. And in the, in the case of the um propane clean uh buses, um, you know, that's, that's an even slightly longer timeline, because the buses have to be r- retrofitted or a bus has to be built with a, with a different uh type of uh of of engine. The um, there was a lot of interest in this contract and there was um some very disappointed bidders. Uh, if you were to change now, um, you know, you, for sure, you would be sued by um and and i- i- in, even if you could go to your current uh contract and say, look, we, we don't want to um break the contract, but we want to modify it. Um, you know, whether or not that would be possible is is one thing. But clearly, you you would be sued by the next um uh inline lowest bidder, because you're you're changing the criteria which they just competed uh over. Um, and again, um, if you took the option of going back out to bid, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have buses in time for transportation. And again, it sets you up as an unreliable uh entity in terms of um of future bids and and um conducting uh business. So I I don't think that option exists anymore. Uh, it exists, it existed prior to the um um approval of their, of the new contract in February. The company is acquiring its buses now uh and has, you know, got financing for that and all of that. And we were just, um, we're just too far, too far down the road to uh to do anything about that. Now, if you, you know, if you were to try this for a year or two and then wanted to make a change, um, possibly, but I don't see it leading to any savings, given the savings that you've already uh, you've already uh had. And um chaos and uncertainties regarding having uh transportation for next year if you were to um uh try to undo a decision you so recently made.
I have two questions about that, Diana, do you mind if I ask first?
Uh huh.
One of them is sort of a flighty hypothetical. In the instance that we do not have a need for transportation for some time, does that change things? For example, and I don't, I'm, I don't say this to increase anyone's anxiety or make anyone speculate, but from what I hear from leaders and scientists in the news, it may be a a longer time than we think before we have a need to transport students. And so, given that that's the case, might that change our ability or the perception of changes that we might want to make? Um, one question. Second question, um, I feel like after a briefing by the Finance Committee Chair, I had a different understanding of what the actual cost relative to the actual savings were. And I know the number uh is, the number of what the cost is of the contract includes some savings that are not spoken about when people talk about what it costs. So if you could just tell me a net number, that would be helpful for my-
Three hundred, three hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Is the net?
Is the net savings.
Oh, savings.
Even with the additional buses.
Yeah, I mean, net cost.
Oh, I'll let Tom handle that one. I don't have it.
So so Sarah, you you you, uh, let me take your second question first, and and these are really good, good questions. Um, the, you'll remember in the committee's recommendation, the uh, the cost of changing the times based upon the addition of of uh five buses was four hundred and some odd thousand, I think it was four hundred and seventy thousand, if I'm uh-
Four, four fifty-seven.
Four fifty-seven, thank you. Okay, you've already saved um three hundred thousand of that, right? In the, in the bid process, so um, you you know, you could, you can create a lot of of chaos here and and the the chance of not having any transportation o- over something that is not going to net you uh much savings to to begin with. As and that's, that's putting aside, you know, what you would spend on any legal challenge from the next highest bidder and so on and so forth. Um, in terms of the first uh question, um, it's a really good question. Uh, currently, um, the transportation contract, uh, the one we have that will expire on July one um uh uh is covered under the Governor's Order um seven R. And so that means that um uh the governor, the state continues to provide aid. We employ all of our staff. Um, and our contracts have to be, stay in place and be paid as well. And the companies have to pay their staff. So right now, we are paying the bus company, they are paying their staff, even though it's not being used. And that um has been prescribed by the the Governor's Order. Now, you know, whether or not that order would be adjusted um uh beyond July one for the next school year. And by the way, our new contractor has to have uh their buses available on July one for summer school. Um, so whether or not that would be adjusted, um, I don't, I I don't know. Um, but right now, it's it's under the control of the Governor's Order and we're paying the company and they're, they're paying their staff.
Gotcha.
Sarah, sorry, this is Ralph, I didn't mean to, but um-
Hi, Ralph.
Really has his hand up too as well, to-
Okay. Um, okay, uh, Mayor Really, why don't you go ahead and then Diana, do you mind going out there, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Just uh, and I apologize, because earlier I lost connection because of my wifi. Uh, so I don't know if this had been discussed, but I know we're talking about the budget and what the potentials are for some additional funding. I know through my executive order, because I declared an emergency, a civil preparedness emergency in Norwalk, I was able to authorize the expenditure of six hundred thousand dollars for sanitization of the schools and four hundred thousand dollars for Chromebooks. We are intending to apply for reimbursement from FEMA or from what other uh source may be available for reimbursement. So we have the the potential for those capital funds available. The other thing is, um, I heard mentioned earlier about carryover of funds from this year into next. Um, and the way Dr. Adamowski mentioned it, may very well be a possibility. The other thing is that the state of Connecticut allows you to ca- request a one percent carryover. Uh, with all the Governor's Executive Orders and the things that are changing, we may want to change that to, for at least this particular year, to allow you to request a greater number, um, a greater percentage of carryover. So if you have a three percent carryover of your budget, or I'm sorry, if you have percent left at the end of this year, uh, perhaps the government, the state would allow us to carry that whole three percent over. So we may want to uh reach out, I'll reach out to Senator Duff and make a recommendation to the state of Connecticut that we allow a greater percentage carryover if it's available. Um, and then I understand also that you're looking for uh Chromebooks for um uh first, uh, first, second and third, is it? Or first?
K three, yeah.
Okay, through, uh, so um, I think um, Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Dakowitz uh should have a discussion on uh what that possibility is and what the costs are, so we can make a determination as to how we want to proceed with that. That's all I had to say.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I wanted to say, I'm sorry, I can't see people's hand raised. I know I made a whole big point at the beginning of the meeting about using the electronic hand raise function and Ralph is the one who can see it, not me.
Well, I think if you go down to participants, if you go down to participants and click on that, you can probably see the hand.
I'm not on a-
Uh, okay.
An iPad and I can't do a couple of the things that other people, like I can't do a virtual background. Anyway, I apologize for the delay. Um, Heidi, I just got a text that you have your hand raised, but Diana also has been waiting to, so Diana, why don't you go?
I just want to follow back up on the buses. I just want to say that I don't want to assume and we shouldn't assume anything, because these are unknown times. And I don't see why we cannot ask or speak with the bus company or legal to see where we stand or what it could possibly be. And actually, I would love to see um the numbers. Like, I wasn't a part of the board before, but I would like to see the contract prior and then this one, just to confirm the numbers, because we need to look at everything.
I thought it was provided to us at the Finance Committee meeting two prior in February when we vetted it.
We can make sure that that information is is circulated and available. Um, Heidi, you also had a question too, or a statement?
Yeah, actually, no, I'll, I'll speak briefly, that was from before. Um, I had my hand raised, but that was prior. Um, first of all, I want to thank the mayor, thank you so much for everything that you're doing and we certainly appreciate that, appreciate that throughout the city and everything that's been going on with this virus. So thank you so much for really working wonders with our community and and really bringing everybody together. So very much appreciated and and thank you, Sarah, for making the announcement and having a moment of silence earlier. And it's just so important and it's so, so sad, everything that's happening within our community and and really throughout the world. So thank you for bringing up, you know, people that unexpectedly passed away here in Norwalk. Um, but I did want to also speak to Dr. Adamowski and thank you for putting this all into perspective as far as numbers and the bus company and and bids and all. And I'm not sure many of the public are aware of what's been happening with this. But, you know, one thing I just will add is, and I know Mike had mentioned it earlier, um, you know, we had discussed this, this has been going on for the past couple of years. And last year, we were pretty much ready to go and, you know, for budget restraints, we weren't able to. And, you know, we discussed it as a board and and we said, you know, let's have more outreach, let's have more meetings, let's reach more people and really talk about the number one compelling reason to do this is the science backing this up and and the health of our students. And that's why we really pursued this and pushed this. So I started early out a couple of years ago with a conference in Washington DC and and that's where it really made me think and and I tried to bring that back here to Norwalk and and get the discussions going. And then Dr. Adamowski brought together a committee and we worked closely for a couple of years. So I guess my concern is, and I understand the budget restraints and what we're going through, but um, and I know these are very, very different times now, but we were ready to go last year and we held off because we didn't have the funding. And we, again, we wanted to do more outreach. And I think for me, um, as a board member, I'm concerned if we push this again, it might never happen. So I think we have to look at that. Diana brought up some other points, we have to look at more numbers and then collectively as a board, make a decision. So I just wanted to state that and put that out there.
Thank you, Heidi. Um, Ralph, does anyone else have their hand up? I'm sorry that I can't be at-
That's okay, yeah, and I apologize for that too. Um, it looks like Sherrell may have her hand up.
Sherrell?
I don't, but but I, but I can, I didn't have it up, but I can. So I think what I need to see, I know, I I believe the teachers were polled as far as like their thoughts on the start times, I'm assuming a cross section of the community was also polled, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, there were surveys, Sherrell, um, that went out, we had focus groups, we tried to really have as much of an outreach as possible. We really worked on a committee that was made up of teachers and principals and community. I mean, we really worked hard on that, we really wanted to have as much outreach and there were many surveys that were, that went out as well, yes.
So all of the-
That went out, okay.
Uh, um, Ms. Harris, all of the um survey and focus group i- uh information results are in a uh appendices uh attached to the committee's report uh that the board accepted, we can get you a uh, uh, we can get you a copy of that.
That would really be helpful, I'm just curious to know as far as the community and as far as the teachers, do we have a percentage of the people who were in favor or not in favor? Just roughly, if anybody can recall.
I don't think there was actually a a polling, uh, but we did have uh teachers who uh were on the committee uh representing um um both high schools. And it was their job to keep the faculties uh informed and also to get input from them at each of the uh of the schools. Um, there were uh, there, there were um some forums that teachers participated in, uh, parents participated. Uh, we had uh focus groups for students and um then there was, there was also a student uh survey. And again, we, we can, we can get you, we can get you that, it's uh, it's, it's in the committee's report.
All right, that would be great. One thing I know that I have had parents, I guess now, you know, that, you know, they're home with the kids, are saying, you know, if it would be great to have um, you know, the start time pushed back, like maybe eight thirty, nine o'clock. On the other hand, um, you know, when everything gets back to normal, whatever the new normal will be, you know, you have parents, a- and and this is, I guess, where my question is, I'm not saying it's not a good idea, because I I I'm for it due to the studies that Heidi has presented and things that I've read. But, you know, you've got teachers um who will re, who will have to readjust their time. And then you've got, have parents, you know, who um have, some of their kids are responsible for the younger kids. So I'm wondering if all of that was taken in into consideration?
Uh, yes, and that, that was um, that was the primary reason to give a year's notice uh and to publicize this uh for a year, which we have been doing since uh, since last summer. Um, so I think, um, you know, I I've got to believe that a lot of people have already planned uh for this adjustment. Um, may create a whole different set of problems by uh by going back. But um, I I I think, you know, I I I just, I just want to emphasize what uh um uh what Ms. Key said, um, this is a student health and welfare issue.
Right.
And um, you know, it's uh, it's, it's important that this uh, this guide us as a, that that health and welfare of our students guide our priorities.
Can I speak to that?
I, um-
One second, I, yes, and I just wanted to say also that I think it's possible that after going through this experience together, that people will have more experience making slightly inconvenient decisions in the service of health.
I think so, because I think this is- Yeah, I think this experience basically has has, at least the people that I've spoken to, I think it's helped them see things in a different light. So, anyway, but thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'd just love to have a moment to talk about um the conversation that we're having in our country right now about listening to scientists and doctors. So this is recommended by the CDC to preserve the health of our adolescent- So this is recommended by the CDC to preserve the health of our adolescents. And I don't, I can't think of a more important priority right now than the health and wellbeing of our students.
Barbara, I do agree with you. Children are very important. But at the same time, I'm thinking of not cutting the support system that our children are going to need once we go back into the buildings with everything that's going on here. The moral support, social, mental, everything. That we should look at anything and everything in order to keep the support for the children.
I think, to that point, I see you, Mike. It's important also for the public to understand that all of these decisions are very thoughtfully considered, and that no one is unilaterally or capriciously or thoughtlessly just saying, oh, we'd like to do this because we think it'd be fun, you know, it's nothing is, everyone is very, very, very thoughtfully considering how to move forward with the budget that is best preserves services and education for students in a very difficult time. And so I'm going to just keep repeating that.
Yes, thank you, Sarah. So I, I kind of want to say something that's all connected, but in several steps, that obviously, all this stuff we're looking at is to increase services, to improve the education for students, the environment, and, and what we're offering them. So there's no doubt about that, but the fact is, we are in a untried territory now with a recession that, it's not a recession, it will be a depression that's along the lines of the Great Depression, way worse than 2008. Over twenty percent or higher unemployment, GNP declining ten percent or more, statistics we have never seen before in our lives. So at a minimum, we have to prioritize, and you know, we need to be prepared for what's coming, and you know, we do have the rainy day fund, but that's not going to last forever, and so we need to prioritize. That's, I think my main point is, we need to prioritize. And there's no doubt, we know the science supports school start times. We also know, we spend a lot of time and money getting rid of study halls. And in the proposal that we're considering, we're going to return study halls to ninth graders and 10th graders, even though we now have the higher twenty-six credit graduation requirement. So I feel like we're, we're kind of throwing out some of the work we had done earlier, and we're incorporating new services, new products, you know, like the school start time, and so I think there's a, there's a tough balance here that we need to get get straight, and that's why we're having this debate, and I know we, several people have already said, you know, especially you, Sarah, that, you know, we are, all this stuff, in a perfect world, we would keep, but we're not in a position to, particularly now, when we're going to be in the biggest economic downturn that we've seen in ninety years, almost a hundred years. So, you know, we need to get real here, and pretending that everything's just fine, and government, I'm sorry, Governor Lamont did us a disservice by freezing everything till June thirtieth. We're in this fake world that really doesn't exist, and July one, we're going to have to wake up, and considering how little ECS money we get, you know, the state is not going to be in a position, they can't go into deficit like the federal government, they're not going to be able to come help us, so we're on our own, and we need to plan, and you know, we have a new student here, we'll transition with Dr. Adamowski, but she's going to inherit this, and we need to prioritize what is most important. So that's my case.
Okay. Also, I think Godfrey, yeah, Godfrey has his hand up. Godfrey has his hand up.
I just simply wanted to make sure we didn't lose focus that we will be receiving a very different population at the end of this. You know, in any opportunity we can be around securing we are intentional, you know, and being ready to anticipate that the trauma teachers, students have experienced during this long period of unforeseen time. I think it's important that any opportunity we take advantage of to do things different and not be rushed to get back to normalcy will tremendously benefit us and help us manage our capacity to move forward. I understand this is budget season, you know, and why this, the, you know, in front of everyone's minds, but it's, it's really important to, for us to continue what we've been doing well, which is just managing how we've been getting people to faze it. And the more we're able to hear from our teachers and the students who aren't able to, able to voice or give options for how this should look, I think the better off we are of being prepared for whatever comes outside of our personnel and our students are really focused on what got us here and what will move us forward.
Thank you, Godfrey. I think that's an excellent point. I would also like to say that there are a number of decisions that we cannot make right now, and so I think it's important to keep that in mind, that we are not capable of making decisions at this moment in time, and so Ralph, does anybody else have their hand up? I know you had said that you thought there would be a number of public comments.
Oh, yeah, no, when, when it comes time for public comments, when you're ready, I've got a list for you, but, um, no, there's no other hands up right now.
Okay.
Can I tell you, Godfrey, what Godfrey said, which I think was very, very good. I know that the board had received word that we would conduct a survey of the teachers and the families to find out how things are going and how we can improve. I know that the special education team has put together a survey for that demographic. Where are we in delivering a survey more generally?
So I, I believe this was discussed at the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting, I, I, my understanding was that there, there was a decision not to do a survey at this time, given some of the other adjustments that were, were occurring, but that there, there may be one in the, in, in the future. Brenda, if you are, Brendan Myers, if you are on the call, can you, can you just confirm that, please?
Dr. Adamowski.
Hey, Brenda.
We reviewed this at the Curriculum and Instruction Meeting. We talked about what, what would be giving a survey to the families of twelve thousand of our children, specifically when we're hearing from families that were a little inundated with supporting distance learning and supporting their students, and the way we have been working on the phasing and how we're supporting students and learning. We know we're all learning through this process. We know that one of the comments we did talk about quite extensively at our meeting is before learning occurs, we really do need to take time to always address the, the emotional needs and the supports that our children need in order to even help to support them and prepare for this. So at this point, there was no plan from Curriculum and Instruction to move forward with a district-wide survey.
Thank you, Dr. Myers.
May I add something?
Go ahead, Sherelle.
So I think this will be the perfect time to actually do that, because obviously, this is very important to the people who have spent time putting this stuff together, Heidi and others. However, we still need to know what, and I took Godfrey's point, we need to know what the students and the teachers are thinking. The teachers are going to be our backbone. So you know, they're in the classroom with the students, this will be the perfect time, because we do not know what the new normal is going to be. This will be the great time to transition if we're going to do it. So I think we, we do need to hear from the students, we, or the parents, and we do need to hear from the teachers.
I agree, Sherelle. Thank you so much for saying that. I, I note that we had an email on April third from Dr. Adamowski suggesting that a survey would be a good idea. And I think when we talk about that sixty percent that loses two years of learning and the forty percent that never catches up, we really need to be knowing from that forty percent.
Oh, Barbara.
Oh, Barbara, you
Can you hear me?
Barbara, are you there? Yeah, I can hear you now.
My computer does this, it just periodically shuts me up. I'm sure many people wish that function would remain. What I was saying is, we have an email from April third saying that a survey would be a good idea, and we never got follow-up. And I agree with Sherelle that really now is the time when we talk about the sixty percent that will have two years of learning loss and the forty percent who will never catch up. I really want to hear from
You cut out in the same spot. Yeah.
We can hear you now.
Okay, I don't, where did I, where did I drop that?
You want to hear from certain people?
I want to hear from, I want to hear especially from the forty percent. So a survey that is targeted either through direct teacher contact or, you know, some very hands-on method that gives us an idea of how it's really going house by house and where they need further support and where we could.
Oh, Barbara.
Are you there? Forget it. You know what I mean. I'm, I'm in favor of survey.
You're in favor of a survey, okay, so it seems
You should, hey, you can, you can dial into the call and not use your computer's audio.
Yeah, that's true. You get more broadband with that way if you do that. So I feel like that's a topic that necessitates further discussion, and also that it's not entirely budgety. So
Can I just add?
Yes.
There, I, I just want to add, I, I agree, and I would just layer on top of all of that. You know, I think we've all been seeing on social media, like, you know, the different kinds of responses and advice, and, you know, my own students, one of the things that I've been paying attention to is not allowing the panic to set in too, too, too much. And there's a lot of panic about people saying, oh, my child lost this, my child lost that, you know, but one of the biggest things we want to make sure is that our child, that our children survive through this and are nurtured and loved, and we don't want to panic too much just because they may have missed a unit. I get it, and we live in this competitive world, but everybody's going through the same thing, so I think the survey is super important, and I think that needs to be contextualized so that people don't think that life is lost if, if they, if they're you know, couldn't really keep up at home. Sometimes just making it through the day for a lot of these parents is enough, and we wouldn't allow them to do that.
I think you're absolutely right, Colin, and I would also say for me, so I teach kids with social, emotional, special needs, and my focus has been to let everybody know that it's okay, that it's not normal right now. Nothing is normal right now. That is okay. Ninety percent of children in the world are not in school right now. So here in Norwalk, we're doing distance learning. They're doing distance learning in a lot of other places too, and all of the children who are growing up during this time are going to be a cohort of this experience, and so I think to your point, Colin, about thinking of us as living in a competitive world, I am so proud of all of the collaboration that I'm seeing in human society right now. And so hopefully, as we come through this together, we'll be able to feel a little bit less like we live in a competitive world, and more like we live in a world that can work together and accomplish things together, so. Anyways, that's not about the budget either. Does anyone else have anything that they would like to say about any of our budget topics with the full understanding that we're not able to make solid decisions at this moment? Ralph, you got to tell me if anybody's got their hand up.
Nope.
I'm going once, going twice, okay. Then I think that we can conclude our workshops and then move to public comment.
Okay, great. So, Sarah, what, what I will do is, I'm, I'm going to go down the list of people that are here, and we'll do the same thing we did at the other public comment, make sure everybody has an opportunity to be able to speak.
Okay, and for our three-minute public comment limit, are you going to monitor that, or do you want Godfrey to monitor it, or?
No, I can, I will actually just say that you have a thirty, thirty seconds left.
Great, thank you so much, Ralph.
No problem. And we will start with Scott Hurwitz.
Thanks, Ralph, and I just want to say to the board, thank you for the thoughtful work that you're doing. I know this is a really difficult time, and I appreciate your willingness to kind of drill down and get to the details. Dr. Australia, thank you for coming to work in Norwalk. I'm looking forward to working with you in the future. And, you know, before I talk about the budget, I just, I really do want to say a thank you to the district for the leadership they've provided. On my work with other principals and other districts, I've heard of some horror stories, and I feel like we're being supported and led in a way that's working well. Truly proud of the students of Brian McMahon High School, who I think have responded in a, you know, and, and really made an adjustment in remarkable ways, the story I'm hearing from teachers, some great work going on. Really, just the, the grateful for the dedication of the staff, the entire staff of Brian McMahon High School, not just the teachers, but support services, non-certified, who are making a heavy lift much lighter and, and really pitching in in a way that's making this a quality experience for students, so just wanted to take a minute to say that. I think, you know, as I think about that lift, I think back to March twelfth, which was the day that students were not in school, and we were tasked with coming up with meaningful work that we could do remotely. The people who really spearheaded that work were the department chairs of Brian McMahon High School. And, you know, before you guys make a decision as to whether or not to to go with the recommended cuts, I just, I want to provide a couple pieces of information, just to make sure that your decision is, is made with that in mind. You know, one of the things to consider is that the department chairs are not all given two periods of, of duty time to do the work of the department chair. I know the term release time is used, but it's not truly released time, I think it's, it's time that they're using to, to work on other aspects of being a department chair. Depending on the size of the department, some have two periods for that duty time, some have one period, and some have no, no time for that. So I just, you know, I want to make sure that when you're considering the economic impact of that cut, that you're looking at the, a number that is I think different than what was in the recommendation, and just to take that into consideration. There was a, a letter that this, our School Governance Council, I believe, sent to the board, which had some information about that, and, and, you know, to look at that and take that into consideration. And I think also, just to, to know that part of that would only be realized if we were actually able to cut teachers due to some of the department chairs going back to a full-time teaching load. And, and that's going to be borne out through the scheduling process, and, you know, and I'm looking at the twenty-sixth credit requirement. I'm, I'm not sure that would actually occur in every instance, so it would, it would be something that we're looking at a little bit more deeply.
Thirty seconds.
Back to the department heads, though, I think, you know, it's really important to look at the role that they play in the building as platoon sergeants who are really working closely with the teachers. They're the people who do the onboarding of new teachers, they coach teachers. When there's curriculum development that takes place in the district, they're the ones who are working with the teachers in those departments to make sure that that, that curriculum work is done and it's being implemented the right way. You know, the projects that they work on in the building, NEAS, accreditation, testing, PSAT, SAT, Lost Links, IB, AP, the development of pathways, McMahon Healthcare Academy, IBCP, IBDP, all of these things are, are, you know, the work of department chairs, so I guess what I'd have to say is that, just, you know, before making a decision, consider that this would, I believe this would be really devastating to the work we're trying to do at Brian McMahon High School, and not, and not to the work of the adults, but to the impact that it would have on the students, the, the opportunities that would be lost to students if, you know, department heads were, were eliminated, because that, that work would not, unfortunately, be picked up by anybody else if, if those roles were, were no longer there. So I just ask that, you know, as you make a decision, consider these things and, and and ultimately, you know, do believe we, we lose best for, for students.
Thanks. Time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next speaker is going to be Danny Brown. So Danny, if you can just also just say where you're from, I mute you.
I'm the English Department Chair at Brian McMahon. I think my boss just summed it up pretty, pretty nicely, and speaking on behalf of, of the department chairs at Brian McMahon, we are more than willing to, to have any conversation that anyone would like to have about what our roles are in the building and the things that we do. I, I know that you have received some of those letters from our colleagues and from some parents, and we're very grateful for the response that we have and the support that we have from, from our friends and, and local families. And I, and I'd like to just thank you guys who showed your support tonight for that as well, because a lot of that is just behind-the-scenes stuff that people don't necessarily always get to see, and we don't get to come on stage for. And so I, I would love to have more opportunities to answer questions if anyone had any further ones. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Next up is David Hevelman.
Yes, thank you, Ralph. This is David Hevelman. I'm a parent in the district, I'm also a councilman on our common council, but I'm, I'm here tonight to to talk as a parent, a parent of a special needs child. The first thing that I want to say is thank you to all of you. A thank you to the teachers, the staff, what you guys have accomplished. What you guys have accomplished in this critical time is impressive, and it's been noticed. And I think that you guys all need to take a step back and give yourself a hug. And this goes for teachers, staff, and it goes for the students as well. We've made an adjustment into a world that is very different, and we're figuring out how to navigate it. Dr. Australia, again, thank you for joining us. I look forward to meeting you and to working with you. The budget, I, I want to just quickly echo something that Mr. Barbis said, that we need to be careful about what we're preparing for because we actually don't know what it is that we're preparing for. Ms. Meyer Mitchell said that, you know, we could be in this place again in the fall or in this place again next spring. So we need to look at this, and, and we've talked about this from the city side as well. What, where are we going to be at? And there are so many unknowns that we are struggling with. And so I, I want you to please be careful as you look forward through the budget to remember that we're in completely uncharted territory. And something that Mr. Azima brought up that I just want to say, and that's the biggest thing, is that we have to make sure that we're supporting these kids, that no matter what we do from a monetary standpoint, that it is about support for them, support for them in this distance learning at-home environment, and support for them when they come back to a traditional classroom, whatever that is going to mean as we come out of this COVID-19 crisis. Again, thank you, guys, for the work that you do and for, for everything that you have done and are going to do in the future here. So, thanks.
Thank you. Nice to hear your voice.
Okay, so next is Jennifer McAllister. Jennifer?
Hi, I actually wasn't going to comment, but I'm going to. I wanted to say thank you to the board and to Mayor Rilling for everything you guys have done. It's been tough out there, and the teachers have been amazing. And as a parent of a second grader and an eighth grader, I'm now relearning second grade math, but that's a whole other story. But, um, it's been really great. The support from the teachers are really great. And with the support, my concern is for next year is just making sure that our children have the support that they need when they go back to school, because a lot of families are going to be affected by what's been going on. And I'm happy to hear that the numbers for the later start times were not as high as we had initially had thought, and I think that's great. But I just want to make sure we keep the counselors and we keep the CSID, especially with Nathan Hale, and Nathan Hale's going through a change based on the email we got the other day. I know this piece doesn't sound too important right now, but with the start times, did we ever do a traffic study? I, I know it seems a little
Yes.
odd to ask that right now, but I know I live right off Strawberry. I'm on Dairy Farm. And I know with the changes, I've had a lot of cars cutting through Dairy Farm and a lot of cars going up and down Williams. And thank you to the city for putting a sign up there, a speed sign, but that's part of my concern. Now you're going to have the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school. And I know that Bryan McMahon and Highland Avenue would probably have the same situation. So I don't know if that was ever done. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And the other piece of it is from a financial perspective. I think it's great if we can move dollars that we didn't spend this year into next year's budget. It would definitely help the shortfall for next year. But my, my challenge then is what happens the year after? So we would really need to start getting those audits done now to see if there's any duplicate positions, to see if we could free up dollars, because all we're doing is band-aiding the situation for another school year, and we're going to be in a worse situation next year if we have an increase of enrollment again. So I just want to make sure we're kind of keeping all that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph?
Oh, I'm sorry. Our next speaker is Laura Grisilli. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Okay.
Ralph, I think Laura is the minute taker.
Oh, okay. Our next our next speaker then is Diana Rochella.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, great. First of all, I just wanted to echo what David Havelman said. That saves me 30 seconds. Great job, and it's a very tough time for you all. Indeed, it's a challenging time, and I, I read Dr. Adamowski's recommendations for cuts related to very important programs and also positions. That is why I'm here tonight. I decided to come out tonight, as I will in the near future, to request that we look, think outside the box as far as reducing some of our operating costs, because that money can be used for some of the other side of the business of educating our children. I've proposed before, and I want to propose again. I'm, I was just looking for, just to set a bar to start, and we'll, of course, spend more time in the coming months. But for this fiscal year, instead of waiting a whole nother year as I was asked to do, I think we can hold a bar of asking for 20 to 30% cuts on electricity. I believe then that would be an incentive for our staff and our, our consultants that we hire and for the Board of Ed to take a look at ways that we can reduce our electricity costs and some of our other utilities. I have suggested different towns such as Fairfield, Newtown, as far as the way they've cut hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. They've been at this for 10 years, and they, and it's not just solar on the rooftops. It is solar on the carports. It is, it was, it's solar that's ground-mounted. It's also, though, something that we have not done on our building program, because I've studied it, and that is making sure we, we utilize solar, passive solar by orienting our additions to our buildings so that we can capture natural light as well as some solar gain. I also ask lastly that we take a look at potentially 20 to 30% cut this session. Just, just put it in there, and then they could, we could always come back for a special appropriation. But we need to incentivize the issue of waste disposal. We need across-the-board recycling programs in our schools. And I, I ask now that, especially since our mayor is sitting in on this, that we utilize this coming year to consider making efficient by having the DPW take over waste disposal and recycling, because then this district can save money and also negotiate getting some of the money back while we still have two years. The reason I'm mentioning this, especially for Dr. Australia, I'm an environmental consultant, professional, and advocate, and this could be a great curriculum enhancement for our students, especially in math and science. I ask again that we take a hard look, and we shouldn't wait a whole nother year to incorporate some of these easy cuts to, to, to put the money back into the important and more important side, which is the educational part. When I hear some of you today struggling to get money for, struggling for cuts, and then I'm offering to you in your operating budget with your utilities, easy money. I don't understand why this is, has not been made a priority. So thank you very much, and I really look forward to working with you in the coming months, and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our list is Shirley Mosby. Hi, Shirley, you're off mute. Hello?
Shirley, are you here?
Raise your hand later, Shirley, if you, if you'd like. I'm going to check on mute. Next on our list is Joseph Jenderko.
Thank you, Ralph. Good evening. I hope everyone can hear me. I wanted to start off by first saying thank you to the mayor for leading Norwalk through this very treacherous time. So thank you for that. Welcome to Dr. Australia. As the Vice President of the Teachers Union, I look forward to meeting you and working with you in a very collaborative effort to move Norwalk forward. And also thank you to the board members. I know over the past, like, week or so, week and a half, I've kind of tracked you all down and shared with you some ideas about the budget. Some of them were my own creation, but I was attempting to come up with ways to save money and repurpose money. With that being said, I just wanted to kind of read a very quick statement. Much of it's been echoed this evening, but it is that we are facing an ever-changing world, school climate dealing with a pandemic, now an economic situation that will rival the Great Depression, if not even be worse than the Great Depression. But we need to make sure and ensure that every dollar we spend in this budget wisely creates a lasting impact for our students. It needs to be a student-centered budget. Unfortunately, I do feel that there are several expenditures, including the start time change, which are luxuries, which are built around building one's legacy and ultimately rob valuable resources from our students, our buildings, our staff. The proposed cuts to guidance and the dean of students at the middle school level will ultimately limit the effectiveness of the social and emotional learning programs that we have just put in place just last year. The department heads at the high school, as Mr. Hurwitz pointed out, serve a huge function and are a huge resource to new teachers, to the building itself. They often help, are the point person for curriculum changes, which we've been going through a lot of, especially in the science area. So to lose those positions would really devastate our buildings and ultimately impact our students to the negative. So again, I thank you all for your hard work. I appreciate your time. I appreciate how well we were able to have some private conversations about the budget. I wasn't able to get to everybody. Mr. Barbis, I will find you. I owe you that phone call. But thank you again, and I look forward to working with all of us in the coming year as we navigate this budget crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Next on the list is Gina Kudjaski. Sorry, Gina. We'll come back to you in just a minute. Next on the list is Robert Kane.
Hold on one second, sweetie.
Robert, can you unmute yourself? We'll come back. Sorry about that. We'll go back to Robert in just a moment. The next, next on the list is Mary Jordan.
Thank you. I will touch on a few topics, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I also appreciate the hard work that all of you are doing during this difficult time. The NFT would like to request the board maintain the department chair positions. We have given this a good deal of thought and have workshopped it through a number of people. We do not feel that there is any compromise or collaboration available to change these positions that will, in a way, that will maintain the functionality of the position. We also believe that there is a need for some, some facts here. The stipend for department chair equivalent in Wilton is $16,000. Ours is $3,233. And we believe about four or five chairs in each building have two release periods. Some have none, others have one. As Mr. Hurwitz has already pointed out, the department chairs have provided very needed leadership throughout the lead-up to this remote learning and during the remote learning period. When we return in the fall, the need for this leadership will continue. The extraordinary needs among our students, the extraordinary needs for flexibility and leadership will continue. We don't see an alternative to reduce the time to create this position, to reduce the requirements of for this position and without a, a huge loss. We also would like to, we will be forwarding to you the names of people who are signing on to ask for you to support at least a partial payment for the coaches. Our spring coaches work hard. They consider their roles to extend far beyond the sports season. Region Nine, Fairfield, Greenwich, Wilton, Weston, Stratford, Newtown, they are all paying their coaches full stipends. Stanford is paying half. We really do value the role that our, all of our coaches play in, in our building. In addition, Mrs. Harris mentioned a survey. We have already surveyed members, our members, on high school start times. We presented those results to you, and I will point out again for those new members, about three-quarters of the staff who we surveyed, and these are certified members of the Norwalk Federation of Teachers, three-quarters of them indicated that a high school start time would somewhat negatively or negatively impact them. So this is not a popular proposal.
Thirty seconds.
I thank you for your time and your consideration of these very, very important items.
Okay, next on the list is Shannon Bowley.
Hi, I am a teacher at Bryan McMahon. I am here just to voice my support for keeping the department chair positions. As a relatively new teacher in the district, the department chair on-boarded me completely from start to finish. So, you know, it was essential for me to have someone who taught in my hallway near me who could answer questions on the day-to-day basis when I first started at McMahon. Our department chairs also help us implement different initiatives that we have on the school level as well as the district level without someone spearheading these efforts. A lot of things that we do in our school would not happen. So removing these positions would be a huge loss in our high schools, and it would not only be felt by the staff and faculty in all of the buildings, but by the students as well as their families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Sarah Kiska. Hi, Sarah, you're on. Okay. Just be watching then. Let's make sure. Like to go back to check one more time with two members that are here right now. Gina Kudjaski. That's not unmuted. And I believe Robert Kane has dropped off, so I think we're all set, Sarah.
Okay, and Shirley is not still on the call?
Shirley is here. Let me just try one more time. Can, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Oh, great.
Good. Thank you.
I don't have any questions or comments at this time, but thank you for asking.
Thanks.
Thanks, Cheryl.
We're good, Sarah. Thank you.
Okay, so. Okay, so unless there are any other people here whom I cannot see, who would like to comment publicly. Oh, we did have one email comment submission. Is that correct? I'm just going to double check.
God, McMahon.
What's that, Godfrey?
From McMahon. There was a video link that Scott, I believe, had sent over to us.
No, I got, there's an email from a junior at McMahon. Do you want me to just read it since I have it in front of me?
Please.
Okay. Good afternoon, Ralph. Do you want to start the timer?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Education. My name is Sydney Mulliver. I am a junior at Brian McMahon High School. I'm the head of the Student Athletic Advisory at Brian McMahon. I'm also involved with the CAC Class Act School Student Athletic Advisory Board at the state level. I had come across an article stating that due to budget cuts related to COVID-19, the coaches involved in spring sports would not be paid in this time of crisis. I have attached on Google Drive a video from many student athletes from Brian McMahon on their opinion on what their coaches mean to them. I ask that you please take the time to watch it. All of our student athletes feel very strongly that the coaches should be paid. Thank you for your time, Sydney Mulliver. Thank you, Sydney, for your comment. I don't know that we have a way to have the video be entered into the public record, but I don't know that that makes sense, so.
I uploaded the video link in the chat minutes.
Oh, thank you, Godfrey. What an excellent idea. Good. So now that's part of the public comment. Okay, so. If there's no one else, that concludes public comment. I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't ask Dr. Estraya if you had anything else that you wanted to say or if you had any thoughts before we conclude the meeting.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for welcoming me today. And I wanted to say a few things in Spanish, because I know that there are some Spanish viewers and I didn't get an opportunity to say that before. Quería darle la gracia a todos aquellos que están oyéndonos hoy en su casa y quería darle, dejarles saber que estoy muy orgullosa de compartir con ustedes este día y en el futuro trabajar con ustedes. Espero que tengamos la oportunidad de hablar pronto sobre sus aspiraciones del distrito y cosas que quieren ver diferente dentro del distrito. Estoy aquí para trabajar con ustedes y le quiero dar las gracias porque me dieron una bonita bienvenida hoy. Tengan buenas noches. Again, thank you for welcoming and I'm really excited about the work ahead. I know that there's many challenges with the current budgetary situation, but it will open the doors to a lot of creativity.
Thank you so much, Dr. Estraya. And I also wanted to say that we tried to see if there was a technical solution to be able to have the meeting simultaneously translated into Spanish this evening so that people at home could listen in Spanish. And we were not able to figure out exactly how we could do that for this time. But we're going to try and do that as we have meetings on video. It seems like now would be an opportune time to do that. And also, we will provide Spanish translation of the minutes of the meeting so that people are able to read the minutes as well. So I think that that can wrap up our meeting if I can have a motion to adjourn. Heidi, second Barbara, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You, Sherelle. And thank you all, all our wonderful staff members and community members who are here whom I can't see and whom we can't see on the video, but I scrolled through and I saw your names and it was lovely to hear your voices and I hope everyone stays safe and well tonight. Okay.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned at 9:02.